Welcome to the school committee.
I don't think they're on, no, no.
Put them on. Are we on? Yep, they're on. Okay, we're good. Um, I'll, I'll say that the Wunsocket School Committee meeting on Wednesday, January 24, 2024, is now called to order at 7:00 PM. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Bourget.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Leclerc is absent this evening.
Would you please join me in standing for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. My nation and my God are indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, kids, good job.
We have some guests tonight from Leo Savoy Elementary School, so I'll ask Mrs. Cordair. Please come forward.
So I am very proud to present some of our students from Mrs. Kanesi's Grade Two classroom, and they are going to engage you in a very special game, and I'm going to let Ms. Kanesi explain it to you.
So, we got a new reading curriculum this year that has great vocabulary cards, so we wanted to share with you one of the games that we've been playing with the vocabulary cards, with Wonders, yeah, the Reading Curriculum Wonders.
So while they get ready, I just want to share that today, the Rhode Island Department of Education came out to observe some of our classrooms to see how the Wonders program is going. So we thought it would be a good opportunity to show you some of the things we're doing.
Great.
I got one, I got one.
Who?
Anybody want to share why we play this game or why we like playing the game?
I like playing this game because it's fun instead of just writing or saying the words out loud.
And anybody else want to share what does it help us do?
It helps us learn our vocabulary, your words.
So what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna put a card on each of their heads, and if you wouldn't mind giving the initials of the prompt about the definition of the word, and then they're gonna type a guess. Ready? You guys see the word?
I can't.
You want to raise your hand, and they've been taught to call on you.
I can't see.
I'm sorry.
I see.
I need it, right?
I love it.
So if somebody has a hint, and then Aaron will call on you. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't.
So if you have a hint, raise your hand, and Mr. Hampson will call on you. Can you all see the word?
I don't know the word. I only got one eye to insist.
Nobody knows, does anybody? Oh, Dr. McGee, thank you.
Do what I can. So, can I just say a few words?
Sure.
Okay. I would, I would really like you to do something.
If he, if he would really like you to do something, he would.
Another hint? Tell me.
He's saying that you really, seriously.
Insist.
Ah, good job. The word was insist.
Good, huh? See the word?
You're so smart. Good job.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
This can happen when you sleep at night.
You might need another clue.
When I woke up in the morning, I remembered that when I was asleep, I had a...
Dream?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good.
Are you ready for that?
Okay, all right.
I'm not supposed to show you that, am I?
How about the opposite of daytime?
Um, sunlight?
The opposite, opposite.
Um...
Opposite of daytime. What is it right now?
Moonlight.
Your go.
Um, nighttime?
Bingo. Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Good thing you're younger than us.
I got you.
You ready? Make sure I don't show it this time.
I got a hint. If you live next to me, you would be my...
Neighbor. Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes families like to go out on these...
Adventure?
Wow.
Let's get some... They're making them a lot.
Okay.
There's a starlight and a...
Moonlight.
Whoa. Wow.
Ms. Kepiscus, do you have any clues for us? Trying to engage everybody over here.
Something makes you very, very happy, you might feel...
I think it needs another hint.
Another hint. Someone else have another hint? Sometimes when I guess, come over, I feel very...
Friendly. Uh...
You're close. About the one that Ms. Kepiscus said. When you feel really excited, really happy, you feel...
Delighted.
There you go. Good job. All right. Uh-oh, last one?
The chairman.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah. Okay. If you didn't eat it all today, your stomach would do what?
Grumble.
So I'm gonna have Ms. Kanesi explain the, the purpose of the vocabulary rather than just do a, a memorization type of thing with Wonders.
So, um, the kids get eight words for the two-week unit, and this is a way that they, sometimes we use antonyms to describe them, to have them guess. Sometimes we'll use, you know, a clue like Ms. Costa was giving, where they have to finish the sentence, and they get really good at these eight words. They respond to them in sentences, they read them in text, and so this is a way that they, they're, they're not memorizing them, even though I know it kind of seems like it, but this is after two or three days of practice with them in texts and synthesizing the information and then engaging with the words. And it's a way that they really enjoy practicing the vocabulary words, and the picture cards really help, so we've enjoyed this part of the Wonders curriculum. But they did a really good job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent job.
Aw, they were so cute. That was so much fun. So delighted to be here. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. So do you want me to go right into the rest of the presentation? So I just want to say that Wonders is a new curriculum for our school department. We, we have piloted many programs, and, and Wonders was one of them, and we've all adopted it for this year. And so we thought it would be a good opportunity to showcase some of the work that they're doing. When we look at RIDE cast scores, we, we know that our students are struggling with vocabulary, so we've really put a lot of emphasis on vocabulary, and that's one of the reasons we chose to emphasize it. So thank you, Ms. Kanesi, in Grade Two for showing us how smart you are and all the things you're learning.
Good job.
So although everyone doesn't have the presentation, they asked us to talk a little bit about what we're doing and how we focus on preventing bullying in our schools. So it's pretty opposite of what we just showed you, but I just want, I know the school committee got the presentation, and I just want to share with you that, um, at the elementary level, I feel like that's the place where students are learning to be socially appropriate, and sometimes they don't even know that what they're doing could be considered bullying, and I think that sometimes it's all about educating not only our students but the parents. I get many phone calls, as many administrators do, that tell me their child is being bullied, when in fact, it's just, it might just be, um, sometimes it's a misunderstanding, but sometimes it's just kids not understanding what they're doing is hurting someone else, whether it be their feelings, or what they're saying is excluding or whatnot. So one of the things that we focused on at Leo Savoy this, this year is educating not only the students but the parents on what exactly bullying is and how we can work together to teach our students what their actions and words do to affect other people. So in your, in the presentation that was shared with you, it talks about what is bullying and some key facts about bullying, like what grade level is associated with the highest rate of bullying. Elementary school is not one of those grades, but sixth grade and middle school is at the top of the list. I just thought that information is something that can be very informative. And then, one of the other things is where does bullying take place? It's not usually in the classroom, it's usually in the hallway, at lunch, at recess, in the locker room, in the bathroom. And the other thing is over the phone. And I think that if there was one thing that I could encourage parents to do or not to do is buy their child a cellphone before they're ready for it, which would mean long before... I know we all have good reasons for giving our child a cellphone, but I can assure you that at the elementary level, they are not ready for the responsibility and the understanding of what goes into chat rooms and, and social media and whatnot, and it causes more problems than it's worth. And I know it sounds old-fashioned, but in the day when you had to call the school to reach your child, that's, we still have telephones at school, and you can still reach your child that way. So that would be one of the biggest things I see as a problem. I had three third graders in my office today, they were bullying each other in a chat room, and I'm very confused why third graders have cellphones and are in chat rooms. So just remember that your child might, even though they might seem mature and responsible, they might not be ready for that. So anyway, one of the biggest things is that parents and students have to understand that their words and actions do affect other people, and even though it might seem like a joke to them, it, it's something serious to somebody else. One of the things that we focused on at Savoy is teaching students how to be kind. Instead of teaching them not to bully, if we teach them how to be kind, it might have a bigger impact than telling them what not to do, but really focusing on what they can do to make each other's lives better and enjoy their school experience. So I don't really want to get into what we do every month on bullying, but I can tell you that we always try to focus on the positive at Leo Savoy. We always try to celebrate good intentions, good deeds, and helping each other, and they might remember it for the moment, and then the next month, we might have to remind them, but it's worth the effort because that's where they learn how to be appropriate. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we'll go into public comment. For anyone addressing the school committee this evening during Good and Welfare, please begin with your name and your address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during Good and Welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. I see we already have somebody at the podium. Your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Michelle Stabor. I live at 139 Ray Avenue, and I've given each of you a copy of House Bill 7129. And the reason why I'm bringing it to your attention and hope anybody that's listening's attention is I have some concerns about it. If you turn to the back, you'll see the summary where it says, "This act would allow school committees to add items not appearing in the published notice to their agendas for the purpose of discussion only if the revised agenda is filed with the Secretary of State." Now that sounds very benign, doesn't it? You can understand that we might have situations like that. But that's not what quite concerns me. I'm very concerned about a clause that you'll see, I've highlighted it, where it says, "Said informational items may not be voted upon unless there has been post, they have been posted in accordance with the provisions of this section." So there's rules that you have to follow. "Such additional items shall be for informational purposes only and may not be voted on except where necessary to address an unexpected occurrence that requires immediate attention..." Oh, I'm sorry, "immediate action to protect the public." And then it also talks about it a little bit further down, again, talking about emergency meetings to protect the public. I'm very concerned about this because protection of the public is overly broad, and after the issues that arose under the emergency powers of the state, I'm very concerned to have a committee have a loophole to vote on anything concerning our schoolchildren without due public notice. We've already had a significant amount of autonomy taken away by the mandated powers of RIDE. And it's wonderful, you know, I know each of you may not try to slip something in, but people get voted in, we don't know who's gonna be in here. And over the past few years, we've seen emergencies be used in ways that they shouldn't have been used, and so I think this is very, very dangerous. This is more than just allowing the school committees to add an item. That one clause, I feel, can be very, very dangerous. So I would ask you to look at it. Mrs. Kepiscus, as a lawyer, maybe you can give me some information afterwards if I'm misreading this, but I thank you for listening to this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, thank you for allowing us to have the floor.
I can't, I can't hear you.
Hi, thank you for allowing us the floor. My name is Marie Murphy Gardner. I live at 167 Joffrey Ave. My statement was read by Melissa last meeting, but I'm here tonight to share some additional concerns I have regarding the vote to save our neighborhood schools. The concerns that I've shared the past couple of meetings have been mostly regarding the families of the students that go to the school and the teachers who have had children attend there and who have attended there themselves as well. And tonight, I'd like to share some separate concerns that I have. Tonight, I would like to come to you as a homeowner who believes that taking an elementary school out of walking distance would negatively affect my home value. I believe for first-time homeowners, having a school that close is a selling point, and I believe that my neighbors feel the same of all ages. Additionally, many of you are probably aware or have had part in the fact that the Wunsocket Education Department sends out a watchdog list of registered offenders in the city every year at the beginning of the year. When looking at that report, it's very clear to see that there's less registered offenders in areas of this city that have an elementary school close by. So I feel that as a parent and a homeowner, that's a very important reason to keep our schools in our community. I believe that my neighbors and homeowners around me, whether they're a parent, grandparent, or not at all, would agree that they would rather have the school than more crime in our area. I believe that if Wunsocket decides to take this money and require it to be a three-in-one school, it will be a short-sighted mistake that will not benefit our city's youth long-term. I do not disagree that the schools need serious work and rehabilitation, but I feel that this should be done by securing grant money that does not require us to sacrifice part of what makes our community so great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Cody. Heat to, um, address is 650, um, Third Ave. And, um, we have these, these schools like, um, um, we have Coleman Elementary, we have Globe and Vernon. They are, they have so many children and so many memories in that school. I think we should just leave the schools alone and just repair all the other schools 'cause it's less, it's less money repairing a school, even, even though building a school costs a lot of money, but it will also, um, make less buildings in the city and make it less crowded.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Bubble, and I live at 650 Third Avenue also. That was my son that spoke. So I, I also say that we need neighborhood schools, not just because of the community, and I also agree with Marie, who spoke before me, but the safety of the children who walk to school, and there are a lot of people who walk to school, especially during the summertime. Myself included, uh, do, do walk to school. It is good exercise, it's a great neighborhood, it's a safe neighborhood where we can walk to school. Walking to 146, which is a highway, and sticking a, uh, an elementary school there is not beneficial to the safety of our children. I also want to say, I do greatly appreciate that you are all going to set up meetings at each school to hear the community. However, I do think that this should have been done prior to any decisions that were made to change the community and change schooling. I do understand and I do know that it is costly to repair these schools, but I also understand that we have a lot of decaying buildings in Wunsocket that are literally just sitting there and collecting dust, and we're only gonna add to them if we shut these three schools down, which benefit our community in a large amount. It is not just the walking to school, it's being able to see your neighbor and catch up with them and be able to be a tighter knit community with neighborhood schooling than it is to merge three schools on a highway that is already extremely busy, and we're going to add school traffic to that. I also, um, I, I've started a petition which has over 240 signatures of people who feel the same way. I know that there, um, there has been questions of people coming here. A lot of it has to do with transportation. So unfortunately, some of these parents haven't been able to come here, and I have been speaking for them. If I could rent a bus, I would fill said bus or buses to get them here because there is a lot of parents who feel the same way. This is going to set us further in debt, I believe, in the long run, than it would be to just take the quickest escape of building another school and having more empty buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Estelle Bubble. I live at 648 Third Avenue, Wunsocket, in Fairmount area, born and raised. I think that we need the neighborhood schools because we have to fix the education and the discipline of the kids in the schools as it is now. Building a new school is not gonna fix that. We need to fix what we have, just like us homeowners. Us own homeowners have to fix, when something gets broken, we have to fix it. We have to find a way to get the money to fix it. Same thing here. This is, this, Wunsocket has been generation after generation that we knock down things and we rebuild new. We sell the land, we do this, we do that. We're playing Monopoly in our, our city. And this is not good. Our taxes will be going up. We need to think ahead, not just throw away anything. If, if RIDE doesn't give us the money to fix our schools, then you know what? I'd say to them, "Here's the keys to all the school department in Wunsocket, and let them take care of it," because us city people here cannot afford it anymore. And like I said, you can't fix the kids by building a new school. Discipline starts first. That being said, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. Councilman Brian Thompson, 386 Rhode Island Avenue, here in Wunsocket, Rhode Island. Dr. McGee, Chairman Bourget, and the esteemed members of the Wunsocket School Committee, I stand before you today with unwavering support for the proposed school complex at Berryfield, which includes the construction of three combined new elementary schools. While I understand that some of our constituents have expressed desire to preserve their neighborhood schools, it is crucial to acknowledge that, that RIDE is not offering any financial assistance to refurbish our current schools. However, the proposal for the school complex at Berryfield comes with a generous 94% funding from RIDE, leaving the Wunsocket School District with a mere 6% match. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that we cannot afford to pass up. Therefore, I implore this committee to wholeheartedly continue to embrace and move forward with the plan at Berryfield. Allow me to outline the compelling reasons for, for this recommendation. First and foremost, the construction of three combined new elementary schools will provide us with the state-of-the-art facilities that are designed to meet the evolving needs of our students. Our current schools are in desperate need of upgrades and repairs, which come at a significant cost to the district. By consolidating our resources and investing in a new school complex, we can ensure that our students have access to safe and conducive learning environment that promotes academic excellence. Moreover, the proposed school complex will allow for greater efficiency in terms... Moreover, the proposed school complex will allow for greater efficiency in terms of educational resources and staffing. With three separate schools, we face the challenge of duplication and inefficiency in resource allocation. By consolidating our schools into one complex, we can streamline operations, optimize resource utilization, and enhance the overall quality of education provided to our students. This will undoubtedly result in our improved academic outcomes and better opportunities for our children. Additionally, the school complex at Barry Field will foster a sense of community and unity amongst our students. By bringing children from different neighborhoods together, we can promote social integration and cultural exchange. This will not only enrich educational experience, but also prepare our students to thrive in an increasingly diverse and interconnected world. Lastly, but certainly not least, the financial benefits of the proposed school complex cannot be overstated. The generous funding offered by RISE, coupled with the minimal 6% match required from the One Socket School District, presents a rare opportunity for us to invest in our children's future without burdening, without burdening the taxpayers excessively. This is fiscally responsible decision will yield the long-term benefits for our community, both economically and socially. In conclusion, Chairman Bourget and the esteemed members of the One Socket School Committee, the proposed complex at Barry Field is a visionary solution to the challenges we face in our district. It is a golden opportunity to provide our students with modern facilities, optimized resource allocation, foster community cohesion, and achieve financial prudence. I urge you to continue to seize this opportunity and move forward with the plan at Barry Field. Let us leave lasting legacy for generations to come, one that reflects our commitment to excellence in education and the brighter future of our beloved One Socket. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Kiana Brazier, and I live at 174 Rivulette Street. I'm here tonight to address concerns that was brought to my attention about the teacher contracts. As I was told, the paras every year have to bid in for their students with IEPs. Now, I believe that that is causing a lot of stress and strains on not only the staff but the students, as I am a mother of a child with special needs. The classrooms are, every para that has a student that has a contract through the school department cannot be available to move around where they may be needed. They are stuck with just that one child where there may be another child that needs them. There also has been paras that have been bonded with children that are not exactly making bonds with the children, so it's causing the, my child specifically to have regressions. And I was just told bluntly that, you know, with the contract, it's hard because they have to go through HR and everything else. I just feel like paras should be open and available to move around as necessary and as needed, so we can provide equal opportunities to each child with an IEP. I was also told that them moving around to different students would be changing their job description. I don't feel like that is moving their job description, as they're still being a para throughout their day. I feel like a job description change would then be, being a para to turn into a teacher or a TA. With that being said, I hope that maybe you guys can change the contracts so we can help our students just a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Then we'll go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things this evening. First, I want to recognize Mrs. Kanisi, who was here with her students from Savoy Elementary School. They did a wonderful job. We're so proud of, of how they're learning their vocabulary with our New Wonders program. I also want to thank Mrs. Codere for explaining to the committee and to the community of the wonderful things that they're doing to promote an environment at Leo Savoy that is one which promotes kindness and promotes respect, and they're doing a wonderful job. So thank you to Mrs. Codere. Next, we have some pretty special young ladies here and, and coaches from One Socket High School, so I'm going to ask the committee to come to the other side of the dais. We have some certificates to give out that I'm going to be giving out to our girls volleyball team. I can't either. All right, this is, there we go. I need to put these glasses on. I, I, you know what it is? I'm, I'm just refusing to get the. High focus, yes, yes. So this evening, we have the One Socket High School Lady Novan volleyball team here. The, and, and they're, they're here this evening for a very special reason. And having been an athlete, you know, there are many of us here in this room who have been athletes, and it's, it's wonderful, you know, to win a state championship, it's wonderful to win a division championship. But, but I think that, that, that's important, but I think what's even more important is when a team and when young ladies, student athletes are recognized for their sportsmanship and how they present themselves, how they present their school, how they present their community, is really more important than wins and losses. So I'm going to read a brief statement here, and then we're going to hand out some certificates. "The 2023 season was one of transition for the Lady Novan volleyball team. The team transitioned to new head coach Gina Shambroni, who stepped in on short notice to help lead a young nucleus of players who lost several key senior contributors from the previous year's team. However, stepping up to help fill that void were two returning players, Julia Raymond and Azalea Mueller, who served as captains and helped set the tone for this year's squad from, from the first summer practice. From the start, this year's team was all about playing for each other and being the best versions of themselves on and off the court. This was evident in many of the phrases the team used when breaking down after practices or in getting ready for a match. Mantras like 'we over me' and 'play for each other' become the calling cards of the team, and despite all of the ups and downs of the season, these young ladies came to play each match with a positive attitude and school spirit that was undeniable. One of the greatest highlights came when it was announced through selection from the other teams and coaches that this year's version of the Lady Novans had won the Rhode Island Sportsmanship Award for Division III." Yep, give it up. "This award is truly a team effort, as the coaches expressed to the team upon announcing this award. Although the attitude and respect shown on the court did not translate into more wins on the court, when it comes to the game of life, these attributes make all the difference in the world. Congratulations, and keep bringing the same attitude to what you do every day. It does not go unnoticed. Congratulations, ladies." So every time I do this, I always announce before I start announcing the names that if I make a mistake, don't take it personally, because it's probably going to happen, but I'm going to do my best. So when I call your name, if you could come up on that end of the stage, come across and shake the hands of, of each school committee member, and I will give you your certificate. Jayliana Ramos. Gianna Shambroni. Okay. Thank you so much. You're welcome. If you want to stay up here with us, you can. Okay. Azalea Mueller. You know what? Yeah. Impersonating two players, are you, huh? Yeah, perfect. Julia Raymond. Natalie Gonzalez. Janaya Alexis. Leilani Sanchez. Morgan Marku. Sophia McNeil. Ciara Diaz. Renasia Rodriguez. Jada Famaschan. Amberlee Ripley. Kaylin Crampert. Gillian Lutwa. Caitlin Stupanian. Brooke Ortholete Rosendez. We see you. Allison White. Nina Otunas. Sanaya Shaver. Jada Lopes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there. Good move, huh? Was it something I said? I don't know. Idellis Cormier. Natalie Cologne Ortiz. Karina Piet. Jadelyn Lalaberty. Edine Rosado. Maja Passaric. Kia Boeschmann. Kia Boeschmann. Siona Shaver. Next, we're gonna recognize a couple of people who are critical to the Winsocket Athletic Department. We've had the honor and privilege of having them attend these events this year when the boys soccer team finished second in the state. And these two folks here are just amazing. What they give back to our student athletes, what they give back to this community, you can't measure. So I'm gonna first start with, it's a combo here. Pete Antonio. The second half of this combo, Joanne Antonio. A great team has great coaches. And we're very lucky, our student athletes here this evening are very lucky to have two amazing coaches at Winsocket High School. Assistant Coach Tammy Ryan.
Thanks, Dr. McGee. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Assistant Coach Greg Gutz. And last, but certainly not least, every wonderful team has an amazing head coach, Gina Shimbroni.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, we can head to the other side of the dais.
So I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the January 10, 2024 closed meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the January 10, 2024 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any corrections to those minutes? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Do we have any committee members that want to take anything out? There's a couple of things on the purchases. Mr. Perrier, I see there are three entries for special education Learn Well for the same amount in the same month. Maybe someone could explain that to me?
Yep, so, Mr. Chairman, those are for students that are newly entered into Bradley Hospital. We provide tutoring services for them while they are there.
Okay, but there are three bills of the same amount. Are those correct to have three, Mr. Perrier?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. There are three different students. We assign the same amount, we assume the same amount of tutoring. If more tutoring is required, we come back to the school committee to extend the purchase order. But they are for three different students.
And that's all I have. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive, to, Dr. McGee, roll call, please, for consent agenda.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, I'll ask our student representative, Matthew Cusson, to give us his report.
Thank you, Chairman.
Why don't we hit?
Now you wanna wait a bit till everybody? Think they're going out for a picture, maybe?
No.
Raise the level on these. Thank you. Hey, boy, doesn't feel like it.
Okay, I think, I think we should be all right now. Thank you. I think he can go now.
They're gonna come right back anyway.
Oh, that's all right, forgive me.
Oh my goodness.
Matthew, please.
Thank you, Chairman. To start off, I wanted to note how, as of recently, SAT prep questions have been integrated into our core classes at the high school. And while it is early on in this new method, I wanted to note that myself and my peers were pleasantly surprised by these efforts and that we also think that they are very beneficial to us. As someone who just went through the SAT process, I can attest how beneficial prep is in the process, even in small amounts. So hopefully, this method proves to be as effective as expected. Next, I wanted to highlight our pasta dinner night that took place on January 20th that was hosted by the junior and senior classes. It was open to the community and overall, it was a very successful night. All the food was donated by teachers and staff from the high school and select elementary schools, along with donations from the lower-level Bar and Grill where it was hosted. Plus, the culinary program at the Career and Tech Center kindly cooked all the pasta for us beforehand. So clearly, it was a group effort and because of everyone's dedication, all of the funds raised were 100% profit that will benefit our junior and senior prom in the spring. We look forward to planning more of these community-focused events before the school year's end. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Thank you, Matthew. Have you planned any dates for future events like this? Because I think those community events are great.
Yes, not as of right now. We don't have any dates set.
Okay, so once you get them, they'll be posted and we'll know?
Yes.
Excellent. Anyone else?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the report from our student representative. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask you, Dr. McGee, for your superintendent's report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll begin, as I usually do with personnel matters. We continue to do our very best to try to fill vacant positions in the district. Committee has the spreadsheet before them that lists the new positions that we've filled. I also wanted to bring to the attention of the committee some positive news. Since the committee approved the increase in substitute pay, we have gotten 15 new subs in the district, across the district. So we're really excited about that. And it just, you just voted on it recently and the word is continuing to get out. But we're really excited that we've added 15 new substitute teachers across the district. So that is certainly gonna help. And I would imagine as, as more time goes by, the word will continue to get out. And I'm hopeful that we'll have even more than the 15 that we currently have. I also wanted to, my second agenda item is an update on the district's bully report. The committee has a spreadsheet that lists the total number of bullying incidents by school this year from September until the end of December. I believe, I'm not sure, are the others in there, in there as well? Or just that, just the, just last year's? Just this year's, the first half of the year?
First half.
First half of the year. So if you, if you look at that list, the first column obviously lists the school, second column is the total number of bullying incidents. And those were, that would be the total number of incidents that were reported to the principal or the administration. The next column is the bullying, that the fact that the bullying was determined that it did occur. And the last column is that it was determined through an investigation that bullying did not occur. What I also did is, you don't have this, but I did pull this up to compare the last three years, first half of the year. And if you, if you, if you look at that, if you take Burnin' Heights as an example, in the '21-'22 school year, there was one incident. Last year, there were zero incidents, and this year, there were zero incidents that came to the principal's level. Citizens Memorial, zero, one, zero, and one. So there was, there was one this year, zero last year, one the previous year. Coleman, zero this year so far. There were three last year at this time, and there were five in the '21-'22 school year. Globe Park, this year, there were a total of eight that were reported, six last year and four in '21-'22. Harris, one so far this year, seven last year and five in the '21-'22 school year. Both here, zero this year, two last year, zero in '21-'22. Savoy, three, I'm sorry, four so far this year, zero last year, and three in '21-'22. Hamlet, Hamlet saw the most drastic decline in the number of incidents that were reported. So this year, they have had 12 so far. Last year, they had 31 at this time.
Wow.
In the year prior to that, they had three. So the good news is, is that from this year to last year, those, those numbers have gone down dramatically. Villanova, one this year, 11 last year and zero in '21-'22. Winsocket High School, so far, seven this year. Last year, there were seven as well. In the year prior to that, there were zero. And the Career Center, zero, zero, and zero. So the, the, the good news is that if you, if you look at these as a whole, the numbers have gone down from last year to this year, which, you know, there are a variety of reasons for that. I would like to say that the main reason is that our campuses, as Mrs. Codere stated this evening, are focusing not so much on the, the negative connotation of bullying, although that, that's important. It's important to educate our students. But what they're really doing, and I think this is having an effect, and a positive effect, is they're focusing on establishing environments where people, students, teachers are respectful of one another, are kind to one another, and are empathetic to one another. So I'm hoping that this trend will continue for the second half of the year. And I'm willing, you know, I'm, you know, hopeful, again, that, that the work that our, our schools and our teachers and our administrators are putting in now, we'll continue to see that as, as we move to the future, this year and in further years. So I'd be glad to answer any questions the committee has at this point.
Just to underline what you've been saying, Dr. McGee, we've had our school representatives, the principals have come, students have come to talk about anti-bullying efforts that they're making in school and some of the things that they're focusing on to make the school experience a good one for everyone. And it's not a surprise to me that the numbers have gone down, because I agree. I think it's the efforts that we have in our schools, all our schools, that are making these numbers go down. So it's congratulations to all our principals, teachers, administrators, and our students for making this happen. Mrs. Costa, you got something?
Just a quick question. So you said the high school had seven last year, seven this year. Do you know if those are the same carrying over from last year or are they different instances?
I don't know. I could look.
Okay.
You know, I, I have, we, we received the specific individual reports that, that have the specific information. I could look to see if, if they were the same ones.
Just wondering if they were the same ones, if they're carrying over from last year's problems and if there's something more.
And that could be across the board. I mean, they're, it's certainly possible.
Okay, I just wanted to know that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, the statistics that you presented to us bear out what Mrs. Codere told us earlier, that the majority of incidences occur in the middle school. And obviously, Hamlet, you know, obviously is a representative of that, how the situation does happen in middle school. So obviously, that's where the greater attention, you know, really must be played out, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have no subcommittee reports this evening, and we'll start with a financial update. I'll ask Mr. Perrier for that update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Front of the school committee this evening is the November 2023 fiscal update. Currently, we are projecting a $253,000 surplus as of June 30th, 2024. We can get into some of the financial highlights. On the revenue side, when the state budget was finalized in June, state aid for fiscal year '24 was increased over $961,000 over what was originally anticipated in June. Medicaid reimbursement projection is targeted, targeted to be $440,000 under budget. This is an extremely conservative outlook, and will be monitored as we progress throughout the year. Currently, we are on track to hit our revenue number for fiscal year '24. So I think we're comfortable in that area. On the expenditure side, all regular salaries are about $139,000 under budget at this time. And when netted with the employee turnover allowance of 1.24 million, this would place overall salaries, 1.10 million, 1.101 million dollars over budget. Can't forget that last one. As the year has just begun, we can expect to continue to see savings on this as positions go unfilled throughout the year. So as we get to June, I would expect this number to be pretty close to even. Substitute salaries line is $414,000 under budget at this time. As you all are aware, the school committee at the last meeting did vote to increase salary pay. That expense will be coming out of the general fund for the rest of the year, and we will be charging S or 3. So we do have a little bit of savings on that for our general fund expense. Medical expenses are currently $640,000 over budget. Again, this is an extremely early in the year projection, even for this time of year. It doesn't take long for this to move pretty significantly one way or another. We'll continue to monitor this as the fiscal year continues. We have continued to do our work with outside services to bring in additional support staff for the district. In particular, CNAs have been hired to assist in the classroom, and most of these CNA expenses have been moved to S or 3. Additional funds have been allocated to transportation to cover higher-than-expected ride transportation billings. We do have that encumbered. The district will continue to monitor these expenses going forward. At this time, property and equipment expenses have been allowed to go through with the general fund. We have not moved them to our capital fund as of yet. Most of these projects will be getting between a 92 to 100% reimbursement. So that money will then go to feed our capital fund for future projects, including the $100 million bond that we just recently received. That's gonna be it for the fiscal '24 update. I'd like to talk about fiscal year '25 briefly. It's not here written, but as far as the fiscal '25 goes, I don't know if you've been seeing, but the state did just release their, their numbers for next year in regards to state aid. If you look at the number, it looks like One Socket is getting a small bump in state aid to the tune of about $50,000. The reality is, if you dig into that number, it's really kind of a shell game. $1 million in additional funding is being sent to our categorical for our EL students. But we're losing $1 million in, in general fund revenue. So that $1 million is going to be a little more restricted next year. While we're still getting close to the same amount of money, we're going to have some additional restrictions on that $1 million that we're currently sorting through to see really how that can be used. Now, if you couple that with the loss of SER funds, because at the end of this year, SER III, both the SER III regular grant and the DSP are coming to an end. Currently this year, we're probably in the area of about eight to eight and a half million dollars of operational expenses coming out of SER III. And what I mean by operational expenses, I'm not talking about the one-time purchases that we've done. I'm talking about items like salaries, like purchase services for contractors that we bring in to assist in the district, general supplies, those type of items. So if you kind of put those two items together, we're going to be losing almost $10 million in operational revenue for next fiscal year as things lay on the books right now. And, and I want to repeat that. That's almost $10 million in operational revenue the district will be losing as we go into next fiscal year. That represents about 10% of our general fund budget as we have $100 million general fund budget. This is significant. There will be cuts next year. There is no way around that. So as the finance director, I need to put together a budget that is balanced. That's my charge. That's the Rhode Island general law. The finance subcommittee meeting, the finance subcommittee will be convening in March and we will discuss this process on how we will get to a balanced budget. And we will go through the budget line by line to find all the savings that we can find and figure out how to balance this budget. So we have our work cut out for, for us in the finance department as we move into next fiscal year. I'm confident we can balance the budget, but I think it will look much different operationally next year when we look to what we're doing currently. Now, I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. I'm sure you do, and I'd love to answer them now.
Comments? If the state, usually at the end, towards June, we have seen over the last few years that we do get a bump up. But you can't assume that's going to happen. So we have to prepare budget as if that's not going to happen. With the loss of, the potential loss of that kind of money of $10 million, I'm sure that the administration has already begun to start looking at a 30,000-foot look as to what, what may have to go. Certainly not a, a room for discussion tonight in terms of the specifics because we don't have the final numbers. But I'm sure that's well underway. Also, you know, one of the issues, you, you know, what, what Ryden always says, if we can't give it to you, you got to get it from your local city and town. The most we can ask for is 4%. And we, we know that the city is strapped. So it's not like we're going to be expecting $10 million from, from the city. I see our councilman shaking his head, no. So I guess that's not going to happen. And I know that we don't have that kind of room in the tax, in the, in the tax levy to all of a sudden make up that money. Heck, we haven't been able to get much of our requests over the past few years as taxes were maintained at a low level. And frankly, the taxpayers have been overburdened. However, as you said, Mr. Perrier, we will, you know, the administration will come with a budget and the school committee will make sure. We definitely have to approve a budget that is not in the red. We cannot go to the city with red numbers and say, by the way, it's your problem, fix it. Because that's not going to happen.
That's against Rhode Island general law. That, I can guarantee you, that will not happen.
Correct.
We will have a balanced budget.
We cannot do that. So we will balance that budget together and make the necessary cuts that we have to make, unfortunately, but that's a reality.
And, and one more thing I'd like to add. This, this doesn't even consider anything new operationally that we'd like to do next year. There's no consideration for that. This, this money that we've lost, we're supporting things that we're currently doing. So if you're looking at adding new things for next year, new programming, it's a contract negotiation year. We need to come up with money for that. That's not considering any of that. So, so the hole is really deeper than that. And, and again, I know it's a little, a little gloomy here, but this is something that I've kind of been harping on for the last few years, is that this SER money is going to run out and we're going to need to go back to how things were pre-SER. But we say that pre-SER, but actually, the state is contributing much more now than it did before the pandemic.
Correct.
The state's almost kicked in an additional $8 million if we look at what we picked up over last year. So while I say we're going to be going back to what we had pre-pandemic, that's, that's not true because we do have more money at our disposal now than when we did when the pandemic started.
Correct. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
We also have to consider what RIDE is going to decide at the end of the month when it decides on the RISE Prep desire to lift the cap on the One Socket contribution. Right now, it's at 50, 50%. They're asking to lift, lift the cap and that is also going to have another, that will have, that could have a fiscal challenge on us for next year and years to come.
That would have a huge potential fiscal impact on the One Socket Education Department. As you stated, Mr. Vice Chair, currently, only 50% of the students at RISE Prep are from One Socket. There is a petition to remove that cap. If that cap were removed, it'd be difficult for me to kind of project because I'm unsure of how many students would then be invited into the, invited into the school. So that would be another conversation as well.
But will have the impact that, that you've said, Vice Chair Burke, without a doubt. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Kapiskas.
Moving mic closer because I'm told I can't be heard. But we've asked every year for 4% increase from the city. I don't believe we've ever gotten it. And we've asked for that based on your recommendation, Mr. Perrier, that this was coming. And we needed to increase the amount of the city's contribution incrementally, year after year. Incrementally, those increases did not occur, which is part of what's putting us in this hole, part of it. The other thing is, you can say we have more money than we had pre-COVID, but we also have much greater mental health issues, which are very expensive to deal with. And if you don't deal with them, it affects everything, including behavior, including education, including how far these kids can go, how they can manage throughout the day. It affects our staff who are trying to manage students whose behavior might be out of control because of things that are completely outside the child's control. And we still have to deal with those with less money. And when you say $10 million, it strikes a little fear in the heart of someone who wasn't on the school committee, but was one of those parents, who was called in to serve on a committee to figure out how we were going to make up a $10 million deficit we had, I don't remember how many years ago, 15, maybe 20. And I remember how hard that was to fill that hole and these needs didn't exist then. So your, your words are not lost on me. I'm terrified.
Anyone else? We've got a lot of work ahead of us. It's not going to be pleasant, but we're going to do the best and we hope that we're going to see some comeback from the state because if it doesn't, then it's a, it's a gigantic hole that we've got, that we're facing next year.
Mr. Chairman, just finally, just to underscore too, no matter what we do, our mission is still to give our students the best we can give them.
It's the best education that we can afford. That's what we're going to, that's what we've agreed to do since the beginning and that's what we're going to continue to do. But it's going to be, we're going to be limited by funds and I agree, Mrs. Kapiskas, there's a lot of issues that we have today that we didn't have many, many years ago. Dr. McGee, how would you like, would you like to chime in on this?
Sure.
Why not?
You know, Mr. Perrier said a few minutes ago that we knew this day was coming. And both Mr. Perrier and myself, for the last three years, have been saying, while it was nice to have SER I, SER II, and SER III funds, we knew that unless we received more aid, that these positions, and, and we tried to be strategic, believe me. We, we didn't just spend money frivolously over these last three years. I think there are probably many more districts that spent much more of their SER funds on staffing. We tried not to do that. And we're still going to be in a, in a situation where we have many staff that we added because, as you said, Mrs. Kapiskas, there's the need for it. There, there's, there was that social emotional need here in our district. We were able to add support staff. We were able to add behavior interventionists. We were able to add more social workers. We were able to add more school psychologists. We're going to be in a position, and we are in a position now, we've already started looking at, okay, what can't we afford? And when you have to choose between a social worker and a psychologist, that's ridiculous. But that's where we are. And it's not limited just to those positions. We, we are in the position that we knew we were going to be in. We hoped that the state would provide more funding. And as Mr. Perrier said, this is the first round of, of, or I shouldn't say first round, but this, this is the first number that's come out from the state. Hopefully, in June, we'll have more, but we're not banking on the fact that we're going to have more. We have to prepare for worst-case scenario. And I, I'm hopeful that we do get a little more, but if we don't, this, it's, it's not going to be good. It's not going to be good. And it's not going to be good for a lot of districts in this state, not just One Socket. So we're going to be working very hard over the, the next five months to, you know, prioritize. And as Mr. Perrier said, we, we have to have a balanced budget. We will have a balanced budget. But I'm very fearful of, of what that's going to mean that we're going to be losing in the district.
Right. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the financial update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Next, I'll ask Ms. Morell to give us our special education update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know how I'm going to follow Brad, but I'll try. Below is a special education enrollment snapshot as of January 17th. The data points listed below are tracked and skycword. Right now, there is a total of 1,422 students receiving special education services within our schools from pre-K through 12. This represents 26% of our total enrollment population, which is approximately 5,396 students. This is slightly lower number of students. However, the number of students receiving IEPs is slightly higher. There are 23 students in our transpro program. That's our program from 18 to 22-year-olds. We have about 115 students in our audit district placements. Only 107 of those are students with IEPs. And we also have 166 students in private schools and pre-K programs that we do service. The IEPs there, and that brings a total percentage up to 30%. We're still right there. And if you have any other questions or concerns, I can answer them now.
30%. Anyone? Ms. Kapiskas?
I just have one comment that I want to make sure everyone's aware of as we talk about the budget. Students with IEPs, these are fixed costs. They're not going anywhere. These are federally mandated programs, federally mandated staff that we need to support students with special ed. There's going to be no cuts coming from special ed because if you cut, you can be sued civilly for violating the student's civil rights. So people don't realize, as that percentage goes up, and this is up, 30%, including, those are still our kids, whether they're in our buildings or not, 30% is probably the highest I've heard since I've been involved in special ed. It's pretty high. And those are going to drive some really significant costs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, if we have to get to the point of triage, there are certain areas like special ed have to be at the top of the list and we have to keep them because we have to and we should. But there's going to be obviously some areas that are going to have to fall by the wayside. And that's a shame because of all the great things this district has done in the past few years. Since I, I remember the first budget that I, we had to look at. Dr. McGee, you were asking for maybe one social worker and maybe one other professional to, to come in and help. And we couldn't even give you that at that time. And in the last, in the recent years, we've, we've been able to get more funding. But I remember that was your list, your wish list, and we couldn't even fill that and it was very minor in comparison to what we've done. So we've done a great job over the last few years. You've done a great job with your, your directors and your staff. But we're at a point, as we've been hearing for three years, we've been hearing it. This is the year that the piper and it comes due. And so this is the year that we're going to have to really dig in and work hard at this. I don't think I may, I don't think, I think we've had Mrs. Kapiskas. Any other comments on our special education update? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the special education update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have no other items on our agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:27 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.